It's my pleasure to call to order the City Council meeting of February the 10th, 2016, and ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Hall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Maxwell.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
In order to comply with the Brown Act, we will receive public statements. We ask that you limit your comments to closed-session items only at this time. All statements are given a three-minute time limit; fifteen minutes per subject. Madam Clerk, are there any public statements?
Mayor, we do have public statements, two of them. The first one is regarding, is Mr. Dennis Ravel regarding the fireworks ordinance.
Mr. Ravel, please come forward and identify yourself and proceed.
Good afternoon, Councilman. Mayor Dennis Ravel appearing on behalf of our client TNT Fireworks. I'd like to compliment the council members and staff who served on the litigation and legislation committee and for their hard efforts to-
Mr. Ravel, you know, I kind of jumped ahead of us here a little bit. We're only taking public statements on closed-session items only. There will be a time when the fireworks ordinance will be up for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have another speaker regarding the fireworks ordinance which can be discussed at that time.
Okay, next item.
Under Workshops, New City Website Update and Overview.
Mr. Tandy, please.
Your Honor, members of council, I can recall Councilmember Rivera, I think others as well, have pointed out to us over time that our webpage was somewhat dated and not as user-friendly as it could be. The Information Technology Division, while installing an entire new phone system for the city, have added to that capability a new webpage, and they're going to demonstrate what it can do and what its capabilities are. And Dave, are you leading off?
Yeah.
Dave Heck. I should add that it's rather extraordinary they accomplished both of these things in parallel with one another.
Thank you.
Please identify yourself and proceed.
David Heck, IT Director, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to continue a discussion that I began with you in March 2015 with regard to the problems we'd identified and solutions we proposed for the city website. I told you then that we had identified a high number of visitors using mobile devices who were coming to the site and leaving dissatisfied. I told you then that we wanted departments to be able to contribute to their own content and provide a fresh, up-to-date, useful interface for the public. I also told you how much it would cost. So as an update, we've rolled out a new website that has a new look and feel that reflects current technologies and the expectations of a digital, mobile citizenry. We have endeavored to create a site that serves the citizens of Bakersfield directly as well as representing us well to the world. The technology behind the website is based on a content management system and database. This allows the webmaster to administer the overall structure and navigation of the site while allowing others to edit their own departmental pages, slideshows, images, and news. This isn't just cool technology. It allows departments to get news and messages to citizens quickly while allowing city management the ability to manage the overall organizational message. The website also utilizes technology based on what is called responsive design. What this means is that the site will resize and adapt to multiple devices. So whether you're on your smartphone, your iPad, your tablet, or your computer, the site is going to resize to the device that you're using and give you an interface that's best for that device. Visitors can choose their preferred language. They can reset their font size and even customize a view so that they will be notified of changes that just they are interested in. Our goal has been to provide a toolset for citizens, visitors, businesses, to be able to do business with us and interact with us in a way that's convenient for them. Our next step, within the next sixty to ninety days, is to add an open budget portal, allowing anyone an easy-to-use graphical look at our budget and how we spend our money. The new digital world is an open world, and we want Bakersfield to reflect that. A project like this required dozens of people from every city, department, and division to work together toward a unified goal. It required people to embrace change. These are difficult things. I'd like to reintroduce you to Willa Dean or Willie Sawyer. You've met her before. Her hard work, leadership, and ownership of this project has been our secret weapon. She's been with the city since Y-2K and has been a tremendous asset to the city. A moment ago, I mentioned the difficult challenge of human collaboration and teamwork. I really cannot commend Willie enough for leading that effort because the result has been worth it. I'm also pleased to present to you Katie Reed, our GIS supervisor, who will show you the mapping components of the website, show you some of the interactive tools available to the public, and give you a glimpse of where we're going in the future. And she should show it because that's her vision. And, by the way, yes, we came in under budget.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. First, I'd like to thank the department heads and the staff editors for their collaboration on this project. Their ideas and how the website pages would be structured, we asked many questions on how this website can be used as a resource for citizens. When a citizen first visits bakersfieldcity.us, they have the option to select ninety different languages for translating the website pages. In addition, they can adjust the font size or view current weather conditions. The top menu is broken down into five categories. Government is basically City Hall. In this area, you can locate your elected officials, find agendas, and department webpages. Business, this navigation covers topics for citizens interested in opening a business or doing business with the city. How Do I is quick links to all the questions a citizen might ask. The menu layout was based on a survey which departments provided information on what is your most requested services. Residence is also another area that provides quick links to resources for our citizens. Visitors will take you to Visit Bakersfield website, our sister site that is operated by the Visit Bakersfield staff. Going back to the homepage, the large image slideshow adds to the aesthetics of the site that reflects Bakersfield. By clicking the camera, you can see the photo and name credits. We've also developed a sub-site that will allow citizens to submit photos for consideration for use on the website. The tabs section, the pop-ups. Latest news, most popular, upcoming events, and drought. The charm bar. The charm bar provides quick links to the most requested items the city receives. Google Analytics was examined in determining the charms features here. Another expectation in today's world is incorporating social media in the website. The social media hub is a one-stop shop that shows all the cities social media feeds. We have also recently created a City of Bakersfield YouTube channel. The channel will feature all recorded council and planning commission meetings as well as content created by IT highlighting events such as ribbon cuttings and videos promoting Bakersfield. We already have a video online featuring Park 20th. The department branded pages. Six departments had the flexibility to create their own uniqueness, a sub-site that represents the department's function and culture. Community Development, Fire, Police, Public Works, Water, Recreation, and Parks all have their own branded area of the website. The departments customized their four side buttons based on their requested services. The side menu was broken down so that it is citizen-oriented and not division-oriented. The language was changed to make items easier for citizens to locate. For example, we use the terms garbage, sewer, signals, and streets instead of solid waste, wastewater, and general services. Departments also have their own news feed, slideshow, charm bar that provides quick links to other areas of their site. In addition, the department has their own calendar where they can post ribbon cuttings, meetings, or any special events they want the citizens to know about. Let's go back to the homepage. Lastly, the jewel of the website is the visitors. The jewel of the website is the visitors may customize their web experience by setting up their My Bakersfield resident portal. By signing up for My Bakersfield, citizens can add to their favorites, be notified when a webpage is updated. Citizens may also select their favorite charms and customize their own charm page. In addition, they may sign up for news alerts and feeds. Thank you. Now I'm going to have Katie Reed, our GIS supervisor, is going to talk about the GIS Mapping Center.
Thank you, Willie. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thanks to Google, maps have become mainstream. And with this new website, the city has the opportunity to use the same technology to ensure our citizens have accurate and relevant information at their fingertips. The Mapping Center is easy to access and can be found using the icons on the homepage and on the side navigation. Within the Mapping Center are many options. If you look at the side menu, you'll notice our print shop. The print shop provides our most popular maps in a format that allows the citizen to print the map at their home computer. We also have a data download page. This can be used by fellow mapping professionals and researchers to download our public data, our public layers. On the Mapping Center homepage, you will see we have two general information maps. The first, our City Information Map, focuses on information our citizens want to see. Citizens simply enter in their address, map it, and see information like collection days for their trash and recycling, fire response station, and, most importantly, their council ward and representative. Additionally, on this map, we provide a slider that changes the view from a simple line map to satellite imagery because everybody likes satellite imagery. The second map on our homepage is focused on our business community. This can be used by businesses to get the information they need to help do business within our community. Aside from these general maps, we also have department-specific maps. We have Public Works, Street Moratoriums, and Water Purveyor Lookups. On the public safety maps, we have traffic hazards and crime map. The crime map will allow citizens to sign up for crime alerts within their neighborhood. With our increased visibility, we have begun to update some of the older maps, like the City Information Map, which we hope to have published in the coming weeks. Even more exciting is the new opportunity to highlight interesting and unique features in Bakersfield. To this end, we have created the Bakersfield Maps Showcase. The first in this series is a virtual tour of the historic sites in Bakersfield. The old website had the simple listing for these historic places on the Historic Preservation page on Planning's web area. Today, we are able to highlight these locations with photos, descriptions, and their locations within our city. Not only do we include those sites listed on our local historic register, but we have also added sites from the state and federal registers as well. We are very excited about the future of the Mapping Center and of the website as a whole. As we go forward, we will continue to look for ways we can better serve our community through our website. As we look forward to showcase, oh, and we look forward to showcasing more of Bakersfield life in the future. With that, we would like to thank you for your time and are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, guys. I thought that was great. And I appreciate the fact that you took a lot of time to prepare your presentation as well. I think when I originally brought this up, you know, I thought it was important that we usher in the 21st century on our website, and I think you guys have accomplished that. And I think it looks great. I played around with it over the weekend and truthfully got lost, but I will get my bearings and figure it out. I'm curious, just for edification purposes, this is the result of the contract we approved probably about six months ago? Okay, got it. Perfect. Thank you very much. Great work.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent presentation. I have a lot to learn, so I will get started. But I'm definitely on the cutting edge. It looks great. And every time they say "user-friendly," it makes me a little nervous because it doesn't always feel that way. But anyway, good work, girls, and we will, something to certainly do us proud. So, thank you, Willie. You've been around for a while, and you're other young girls. So, anyway, thank you. It's wonderful.
Okay, everyone. Thank you very much for your presentation. We'll now move to deferred business. And before we do so, Mr. Nero, there are individuals in the audience who are going to wish to speak to this item. How are we going to handle, since deferred business normally doesn't take on public statements?
Yes, Mayor, my suggestion would be to listen to them now.
Okay, now, usually for public statements, we ask that people fill out the yellow speaker card. But we don't have time for, send you back up to the counter to get a speaker card. So, Mr. Ravel, you can please come forward, make your statement, identify yourself, and proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Members of the council, Dennis Ravel on behalf of our client TNT Fireworks. As I stated previously, TNT Fireworks, which represents approximately 2,600 of the 3,000 nonprofits throughout California who rely on the sale of state-approved fireworks as their primary fundraiser, and fifty-six out of the eighty nonprofits who operated in 2015 here in the city of Bakersfield. We want to thank the members of the committee, particularly Chairman Maxwell, Councilmember Sullivan, and Councilmember Parlier for their service on the committee. And as we indicated in our letter to the council and to the mayor, we fully support the Second Amendment as it relates to the administrative fine process and have taken the position, at least from an industry standpoint, that the first choice, obviously, while we have an opinion on it, vests with this body and the members of the community that they've been elected to represent. Having said that, I think I would be derelict in my duty if I did not say that many of the nonprofits have commented to us that they think it's a solution without a problem and that we are curtailing the use of a legal product that isn't contributing to any of the problems on that day when, in fact, it is the illegal fireworks that are causing the problems overall. And certainly, particularly, the records that were produced in response to our public records request on city fire and police would validate that fact overall as well as for the 1st of July in particular. And we do think that the proposal that we've come forward with for the Illegal Fireworks Reporting App, which we expect to launch in March and offer to the city of Bakersfield as well as the other 295 cities throughout the state who allow the sale and use of fireworks, will greatly add to the enforcement capabilities by basically employing the citizens of this great city to be the eyes and ears and reporting officers for your public safety agencies by employing that app and giving the city information that it can proceed with to do enforcement on the new administrative fine app or ordinance. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ravel. Vice Mayor Hanson.
Oh, excuse me, Mayor. Are we finished with all this public statements? Oh, okay, I'll wait.
Are there additional persons present who wish to speak on this deferred business item?
Mayor, we do have Margie Eickley regarding this item.
Please identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Margie Eickley. I represent the West High Regiment Boosters, the music department. Our kids are very much dependent on the funds that we raise with the fireworks. Probably thirty percent of our budget comes from the sale of these items. And as said before, I agree with the Second Amendment as far as the administrative fines. The First Amendment on, no say, I'm sorry, no lighting of the fireworks on July 1st, I can see where it would not solve any problems at all. Your problem is with the illegal fireworks, not the safe and sane. Thank you.
Are there additional persons present who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm now going to defer to the city attorney for her opinion on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit of background. After the last Fourth of July holiday, I believe it was the vice mayor that referred the topic of illegal fireworks to the Legislative and Litigation Committee consisting of Chairman Maxwell and Councilmembers Sullivan and Parlier. That committee met several times since August of 2015. They listened to a variety of community input as well as staff. And at the last Legislative and Litigation Committee, the committee unanimously directed the city attorney's office to draft two changes to your Bakersfield Municipal Code relative to the topic of fireworks. And the Fire Department and the city attorney's office put together a PowerPoint which summarizes those various meetings that the Legislative and Litigation Committee had, Lit and Lit Committee discussed. And so this PowerPoint is a highlight of some of those discussion points. And then I believe at the end of that PowerPoint, it summarizes again the action that the committee unanimously directed staff to perform. And I am now going to defer to Chief Greener, who's going to present that PowerPoint presentation to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hall, Vice Mayor Hanson, council members, Doug Greener, Fire Chief, Bakersfield Fire Department. It's a pleasure to be in front of you today to discuss the Legislative and Litigation Committee's recommendations for amendments or modifications to the existing Bakersfield Municipal Code related to fireworks enforcement and citation. As the city attorney has already noted, the committee met initially on August 24th, 2015, and has had met during several subsequent meetings to review the city's current approach to fireworks regulation and to determine if there was a more effective approach to deterring illegal fireworks use within the city. By unanimous vote, the committee has directed staff to present to city council the two potential changes to Bakersfield Municipal Code, Chapter 8.44, including, again, as the city attorney has mentioned, a component that includes an administrative citation as a recommendation as well as a reduction in the overall usage period for safe and sane fireworks. So we'll begin with the reduction in the usage period. State fireworks law suggests that there are three specific types of fireworks: dangerous, exempt, and of course, safe and sane. Dangerous fireworks are always illegal unless one holds a specific special public display permit issued by the state. They are even illegal to possess without a state permit. And it's unlawful to discharge dangerous fireworks, which stands to reason, where they are likely to harm another person or intend to cause chaos, fear, or panic. On the other hand, exempt fireworks may be possessed for commercial, industrial, agricultural, and wildlife purposes, as an example, to scare birds or animals away from dieable crops. And again, only with a permit issued by the state. Safe and sane fireworks, of course, are those that are allowed to be utilized over specific periods under specific circumstances within the city of Bakersfield. And those are any fireworks that do not come within the definition of dangerous or exempt, and they have to specifically be labeled "safe and sane" and registered with the state fire marshal. And they may only be sold at a fixed place of business with retail sales license from 12:00 PM on June 28th until 12:00 PM July 6th each year, except where local ordinances are more restrictive and Bakersfield does have more restrictive code language. And we'll discuss that in a moment, but we don't, our sales period is already shortened. So Bakersfield Municipal Code, Chapter 8.44.040, provides that only fireworks that are safe and sane under the Health and Safety Code may be displayed, sold, or used in the city of Bakersfield. Dangerous fireworks, obviously, again, are prohibited. One caveat to the safe and sane allowance is that Piccolo Pete and ground bloom flowers are also prohibited by previous council action due to the fact that they're very easy to modify into explosive devices and that they can sometimes leave the ground. BMC also lists rules for fireworks stands and specifies the dates and times when safe and sane fireworks can be sold and used. Violators are cited under BMC 8.44.040A and can be punished by any manner permissible by law, charged with an infraction or misdemeanor, subject to one year in jail and up to a $1,000 Currently, the BMC allows safe and sane fireworks to be sold in the city only as follows, so July 1st through July 4th, under the specific timeframes noted on this slide. We're not proposing to change that. Safe and sane fireworks usage is also regulated under the BMC, and they may only be used between July 1st through July 4th under, again, the hours noted on the slide, but also including December 31st between the hours of 12 noon and 12:30 AM of the next day, obviously for New Year's. So the proposed amendment to the BMC language would eliminate July 1st as a use date. The new span of acceptable dates for safe and sane fireworks usage would then become July 2nd through July 4th and still include December 31st on the noted hours. Moving on to the second component of the proposal, and this is related to the administrative citation aspect, and I know the council is well aware that there has been widespread proliferation of illegal fireworks usage within the city of Bakersfield. And this has actually prompted the council to take previous action, improve annual fireworks enforcement-related activities, going back as far as 2005. However, illegal fireworks are being obtained legally outside the state and illegally brought in to Bakersfield or acquired illegally from sources inside the state. But in any case, obviously, their use locally is still prohibited. Illegal fireworks include mortars, exploding aerial devices, M-80s and M-1000s, and other incendiary devices. And these literally are bombs that can injure, kill, and destroy. Grouped into those illegal fireworks, they also include numerous types of flying projectiles that trail fire, and they land on the roofs of homes, and they burn down structures. And we've seen that in consecutive Fourth of July holiday periods. In 2015, the Fire Department engaged in the following enforcement action, which included 147 total fireworks enforcement-related assignments, nineteen BFD/BPD fireworks enforcement team deployments, seventeen BFD units patrolling in their districts on the evening of the Fourth, Third and Fourth, eighteen BFD personnel in the fireworks call center, seven fire inspectors conducting permit checks, five extra- conducting permit checks, five extra Bakersfield Fire Department fire engines staffed, three fire department captains deployed to the Fire Department Operations Center, and three fire chief members deployed to headquarters. A lot of boots on the ground every year. Additionally, the fire department responded to 803 fireworks-related incidents between July 1st and 5th. 700 pounds of illegal fireworks were seized or surrendered. Forty-four criminal fireworks-related citations were issued over the July 3rd to 4th period. Fifteen fireworks-related fires were fought July 1st through the 5th. And just over $17,000 of fire department enforcement-related costs were incurred. So as a comparison, in a criminal citation process, the crime or violation must be committed in the presence of an enforcement officer, as opposed to an administrative civil citation process where the violation does not have to be committed in the presence of an enforcement officer. That's different than the current criminal process. In a criminal citation process as well, the evidence has to be beyond a reasonable doubt, which means proof must leave you with an abiding conviction that the charge is absolutely true. There are very strict rules of evidence, including a formal hearing. On the administrative citation side, it allows for a preponderance of the evidence. In other words, it means proof of just enough evidence to make it more likely than not that the fact that the claimant seeks to prove is true. So it's less strict rules of evidence, and the hearing is informal. In a criminal case, of course, the court provides the staff and the judge, the district attorney would prosecute, and the city would provide witnesses. In an administrative case process, the city is going to provide staff and a hearing officer. The staff would do the prosecution, and the city would, again, provide witnesses and evidence. A fairly simple flow chart outlining the administrative process paths. Citation is issued. You can see on the far right there, the citizen pays the fine. It's pretty much over. Going to the center flow chart there, if the citizen does not pay the fine or does not show up for the hearing, then the city must pursue the matter in small claims. And then ultimately, the city would record the outcome of that judgment. A citizen that is issued a citation and fine does have the right to appeal the site, which involves administrative hearing. And you can see over there in the salmon-colored box, the staff involved in that is fairly extensive, including the city manager's office, the city attorney's office, the city clerk, and the finance departments all participating. Ultimately, the citizen does have the right to appeal to the Superior Court as well. So the proposed amended language for the BMC would include 8.44.070 penalty. Violation of any provision of this chapter may be punishable as an infraction or misdemeanor or as an administrative citation pursuant to Bakersfield Municipal Code Section 8.44.080. 8.44.080 administrative citation states that an enforcement officer shall have the authority to issue an administrative citation to any person responsible for the violation of this So just in summary, to reiterate what is being proposed here on behalf of the Legislative and Litigation Committee, on January 8th, 2016, the committee met and unanimously directed staff to present the following two potential changes to Bakersfield Municipal Code for separate consideration. Number one is amend 8.44 to reduce the number of allowable days for the use of safe and sane fireworks. Now, we're not talking about sales, but strictly the use of safe and sane fireworks. Number two, amend 8.44 to add an administrative fine option for violations of Chapter 8.44. And we just went through that exercise of sort of detailing the difference between the criminal and administrative sides. If I could just briefly offer some fire department feedback and perspective on both of these proposed amendments. We do feel that limiting the number of days of use of safe and sane fireworks does have a benefit. It takes our problem and makes it a little bit smaller. Granted, in 2015, we had eight fireworks-related calls on July 1st, but we also don't have our fireworks hotline center up. We don't have enforcement teams out, so I'm not sure we truly understand the level of activity that's occurring on July 1st. Also, by limiting all fireworks use on the 1st, we take away any cover that the folks that like to discharge illegal fireworks enjoy. We don't have the number of people in the streets. We don't have the general chaos. And frankly, if we reduce the amount even by 50%, I feel it's beneficial. The second proposal, which is to add the administrative fine option, we are, I would characterize it optimistically cautious about that. We understand through a decade of enforcement-related activity, it's very difficult to get evidence beyond reasonable doubt. It's also difficult to get a preponderance of evidence in a lot of cases. So I think that needs to play itself out over a Fourth of July holiday to truly understand the value. But I think the city attorney said it best in a recent conversation we had, it is definitely another weapon in our arsenal to try and rein in this ongoing issue. So both of these amendments, I think, are beneficial. The fire department and I as the fire chief support them and stand behind them. And I'd like to thank the committee members for their willingness to have difficult discussions on a very complex issue and bring this matter before the council. And I, again, appreciate the council's consideration as well. So thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor Hanson, do you have questions on this item?
I don't have a question, but I have a statement. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Darrow, do you have any further comment on this item?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been on record for the last year or two that I do not support fireworks, primarily because of the illegal situation, not the safe and sane. But unfortunately, when you mix them together, we can't enforce it. And you know, I love the Fourth of July. I love the United States of America. I came from another country, and I look forward to it. And I think the only answer, not this year, but in future years, will be for all of us to enjoy fireworks, watching them from a university school, a country club, this type of thing. There's no way police and fire are going to be able to do an effective job based on the number of illegal fireworks. I'm sympathetic towards the cause of the nonprofit organizations, but, you know, we have to do the right thing. So I am not supporting this ordinance. And I would also be curious, because it really sounds, you know, we get into the fines. There was 44 citations last year. It would be interesting to know how much was received in the form of fines versus $80,000 to the fire department and God knows what to the police department and other groups within the city of Bakersfield, Cora County, well, city of Bakersfield. Maybe sometime you guys could let me know that. I don't expect you would have that number tonight, but it sounds like a very convoluted and type of situation and very difficult to even collect the fines. I'm sure that half the folks that we write tickets to, we're not even sure that, you know, they maybe have a residence. So I am not going to support this resolution. I'm telling you just one last thing. It's going to happen someday. Some child is going to get their hand blown off. It'll probably be with illegal fireworks. But my point is that we just have to do something before the fact. It always seems like we wait for something to happen and then say, oh, my goodness, we need to, we need to change the rules. So I really encourage my fellow councilmen, ladies, Jackie, to give this great thought. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
I thought there'd be other people to speak. So real quick clarifying question. I see that staff recommends separate consideration be given to two ordinances. Does that have to be a motion?
Mayor, Councilman Rivera, we were thinking in ordinance, the thought of the committee, as I recall, is that some council members may want one of the ordinances and may not wish to move forward with the other provision.
I see other blinking lights, so I'll forego making a motion, but I am, I'm not in favor of reducing the number of allowable days. And I hate to, I don't like to disagree with my fire chief, but, you know, I don't believe in punishing law-abiding citizens because of what law-breaking citizens decide to do. And I think it's actually really unfortunate that this conversation goes as far as it does every single year because of a very loud and a very loud reporter in town. So I will not be supporting the shortening of allowable days, but I do believe that administrative fines have to mean something, and I believe that when you do break the law, it must mean something, and I'm in full favor of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Thank you, Mayor Hall. As the Chair of Legend Lit, you know, our committee spent a lot of time, we spent a lot of hours, and I want to thank the chief, I want to thank the city attorney's office, city manager's office for all the time and effort they put into it. Some of the questions that I kind of anticipated my colleagues would have about how many sales do they do on the first night or on July 1st as opposed to the second, third, and fourth would come up. And I know that the smallest day of sales is on July 1st. I think the other aspect that we're looking at, because there are some animal activists that would like to see it reduced, because one more day or one less day of fireworks going off is just a little bit of a reprieve for the animals that are scared by these fireworks. And I think that the committee considered that also, not just in terms of what it does to the fire department and the police department to try and reduce the weight that they have to bear between the first and the fourth, but also because it might give that relief. Do we have the information at all as far as what was asked by Vice Mayor Hanson in terms of number of dollars we actually generated through those fines? As I remember, there were a couple of fines that were not paid or that were relieved by a judge.
Mayor, Councilmember Maxwell, I believe Mr. Rudnick can give you, we had a public records request. I don't have a dollar amount, but I think he can give you an approximation of the number of citations that went through the Superior Court and what the fine was. And then I can tell you that through state law, the city gets a percentage back, but I'm not familiar with that. So you can answer that question.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Maxwell, the fines, the court fines that they fined this year was about $480 per case. So there's 44 citations issued, so 480. And just total that, as far as what the city would receive out of that, that figure is unclear. It's probably a small amount. The state supposedly sends us a check once or twice a year that comes from fines from different court fines and cases that come to the city. But I don't have that information.
Okay, so I just want the public to know that we're not viewing this as a moneymaker. We're really viewing this as an enforcement.
Correct.
Question. I know that if we go to the maximum, which is $1,000, that, you know, this may put some people who are using the illegal fireworks on notice, that it's going to be expensive in the future. Also, if there are more officers or more certified people that have good training out there to try and figure out who's doing these things and give them those citations, that it may start having some teeth. I don't think that'll happen this year, but as we look to the future, Vice Mayor Hanson, you know, maybe we will come to the point where people with illegal fireworks will find it in city of Bakersfield, it just isn't worth it to do it. So I am supportive of both sides of the motion, although I do believe that the committee was intent on bringing these up separately. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion on the second aspect, which is that of the citation, the administrative citations. And then, once we've heard from everybody, I'd like to be called on again to make the recommendation or the motion to also do the first part of the amendment, which would be to decrease the allowable days for sales, excuse me, for use, not sales, by one day. Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, of course, there are a lot of layers to this issue. When I first got on the council, I don't believe there were any restrictions at all for the types of fireworks that we were able to purchase and use for a celebration for the Fourth. So we worked long and hard as far as one by one evaluating what would be the most unsafe and narrowed down to where nothing that would leave the ground. So that is kind of a simple way of identifying what is not supposed to be used. Up until now, of course, an officer needed to be present to actually see the illegal. So when we're really trying to penalize the use of the illegal, the purchase and the illegal fireworks, we, of course, need to open it up. So I'm very much in favor of the administrative enforcement. And we all need, you know, there are those that, on a regular basis, kind of the neighborhood knows that a certain household are the ones that use the dangerous fireworks. So this gives people an opportunity to be watching for that, you know, for that danger. And it will not be worth that, hopefully, very soon, that that is going to be a huge, you know, just a huge discouragement of doing that. I am for fireworks. I don't like the thought of animals' ears being hurt. Now, that gets me, but that, but at the same time, that's been around forever, and, you know, we have to, you know, as pet owners, maybe whatever, whatever. But that's not a reason for banning fireworks, our animals, our pets. And as far as there one day will be someone injured, that's happened in the past. That's unfortunate, but when people use the right type, and that's just like taking everybody's gun away so no one will get hurt by a gun, you know, we don't, certainly don't hopefully support that. So anyway, I'm going to, you know, it should be win-win. We, I'm for patriotism, and I'm for family, family celebration and entertainment and freedom. I certainly want us to keep encouraging people to go to the public displays. They're wonderful. I've gone for the last couple of years, and every year they get better. So this is good. But at the same time, those that are not interested in that, that want the freedom to be able to purchase and have their own family celebration and purchase from a nonprofit that does a huge amount of, a huge amount of good stuff. That is something that I'm, will strongly continue to support, the freedom to be able to do that. And I think it's great that we're going to be able to hopefully give tickets to the family, the people that continually abuse and are on the verge of spoiling it for all. That happens all the time, the few that spoil it for the many. So we'll try to make it very unwise for the few and continue to support the freedoms of the many and the freedom of choice where the Fourth of July is concerned. So I will support the, I don't really think, I will support the administrative part of this motion. We did discuss, and we did unanimously agree in our committee to reduce the day of usage by one day. I will also, you know, we'll, I guess we'll discuss that later, but I will support that also. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Gennaro, for the action that is on the table from Councilmember Maxwell, can you restate the language that he's referring to so that all the council members are clear?
Certainly, Mayor. I show that Councilmember Maxwell has made a motion to amend 8.44 of the code to add the administrative fine option for violations of that chapter.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Vice Mayor Hanson voting no.
Councilmember Maxwell, would you like to make an additional motion on this item?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mayor Hall. Before I do, you know, I'd like everybody to look at our city clerk, Roberta Gafford, who does a great job. She will not be issuing citations. Because this is the concern of some of our citizens, that exactly who's going to be giving these citations out? And I can guarantee you, and Chief, if you'd like to weigh in on this, or Ms. Gennaro, if you'd like to weigh in on this, these will be people that are trained. It is not just anybody from the city that's going to be doing this. And I think it's important, especially for the news media, if you would do us this favor. I get a lot of comments after there's something either in the newspaper or on the TV screen talking about administrative process. And everybody has the impression that anybody that works for the city is going to start going out and giving these fines. So before I make that second motion, this is something I neglected to do, but I think is really important that we clarify today.
Yes, Mayor Hall, Councilmember Maxwell, you're absolutely correct. Part of the issue over the Fourth of July, and the reason that we have put together enforcement teams that pair firefighters that wear flak jackets and helmets with police officers that wear flak jackets and carry weapons, is because it's mostly a fairly hostile environment out there. There are a lot of angry folks, there's a lot of alcohol involved, and they don't appreciate being cited and facing a thousand-dollar fine. So this is going to be something that sworn badge-wearing people that are equipped to deal with the issue are going to be engaged in. It won't be Roberta, which is good.
Thank you very much. I don't think we need much more discussion. I am sure everybody has thought about the restriction that we'd like to see to eliminate the First of July, so I'd like to make the motion to amend 8.44 to reduce the number of allowable days by one, eliminating the July 1st use of fireworks, not the sale.
Ms. Gennaro, can you repeat this language, please?
Certainly, Mayor. The motion is to amend Chapter 8.44 to reduce the number of allowable days for the use in safe and sane fireworks. Again, that is the use on July 1st.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Vice Mayor Hanson, Councilmember Rivera, and Councilmember Weir voting no.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under closed session. A conference with legal counsel, potential litigation regarding mitigation fees owed by Cal State University Bakersfield.
Ms. Gennaro, do you have comment on this?
I think just a motion to go into closed session, please, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Motion adjourned to closed session.
We are adjourned to closed session.
Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by your local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 10:00 a.m., and the following Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Harvey L. Hall.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. Gee, it's nice to see a full house here tonight with our various items on the agenda. Thank you for being present. It's my pleasure to call to order the City Council meeting of February the 10th, 2016, and ask the city clerk to please call a roll.
Mayor Hall?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Rivera?
Here.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Here.
Councilmember Weir?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
I'm here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Parlier?
Here.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, I would like us all to stand for the invocation to be presented by Pastor Joseph Jordan, First Christ First Ministries, and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Smith.
Good evening. I'd like to give honor to the Lord and to my friend, pastor, friend, Honorable Mayor, to the City Council. Thank you for this honor. Let us bow our heads. Our Father and our God, we come before you with thanksgiving. We come before you with praise. Father God, we ask if you would look on this congregation of people, Father God, and realize that we're all just one body, struggling and striving to make perfection our goal. Father God, we ask if you would wrap your arms around us as we go through these economical times of downfall and look on this city and hold us together in harmony and peace, Father God. We thank you for this gathering. We ask that your will be done in our lives. Thank God, and we all say it. Amen. Thank you.
Before we proceed, I request that all cellular telephones and communication devices be silenced. Pursuant to City Council policy, council members are prohibited from sending or receiving electronic communications during our meeting, and we request the same from our audience. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. Also, please be courteous in the use of any steel cameras and video equipment. Audience applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but is not permissible at any other time during the meeting. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Presentations, item four, a presentation of a proclamation to Heidi Carter Escudero, chairperson of the Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition, and Bakersfield Fire Department Chief Doug Greener, declaring February 2016 Safely Surrendered Baby Awareness Month.
Don't abandon your baby. No shame, no blame, no names. Since 2006, 55 babies have been surrendered to this most valuable program in our community. We certainly appreciate the many 21 agencies that assist in this surrender program, and many of them are represented here tonight. And I'm happy to say that the Bakersfield Police Department and the Bakersfield Fire Department are participating partners in this program. And this evening, I'd like to offer the following proclamation. The Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California has officially proclaimed February 2016 as Safely Surrendered Baby Awareness Month in our city. In recognition of the engagement of the Safely Surrendered Baby Coalition in the effort to save unwanted babies from abandonment in unsafe places, in recognition of the partnership of government, nonprofit organizations, private business, and individual citizens committed to providing places of sanctuary for these babies, and in recognition of the need to heighten public awareness regarding this issue and the need to provide a safe refuge for the innocent newborns involved, and in recognition of the 55 precious infants safely surrendered since the program began in 2006, and it's signed Harvey L. Hall, Mayor, City of Bakersfield, joining me tonight as the coordinator of this program, Heidi Carter Escudero.
It's always an honor to receive the proclamation from the City of Bakersfield, because it gives me the opportunity every year to thank Mayor Hall for his support of this program, even though the Coalition has only formally been existent since 2006. Since the law was first passed in 2001, this fine gentleman has been standing side by side with this Coalition and the important work that we do in saving the innocent lives of newborn babies and protecting them from abandonment. And that is the purpose of the Safely Surrender Baby Law. It's just that simple. A woman in a crisis situation, within three days of her child being born, can walk into any fire station and hand that baby into the hands of a waiting firefighter and walk away with no questions asked. These are the men in Kern County and the City of Bakersfield that can receive those babies, no questions asked. That woman also has the option to walk into any emergency room anywhere in Kern County and hand that baby safely into the hands of an emergency personnel and walk away, no questions asked. And in those moments of crisis, that opportunity, that knowledge, that information is the difference between life and death for that little newborn baby. And so we're just so grateful that tonight, the City of Bakersfield joins the County of Kern and the cities of Taft, Ridgecrest, and Shafter in proclaiming safely surrender baby awareness for the month of February. And we thank you again for this honor. I also want to introduce Kristi Orpezza. She's one of our members. I'm with the Department of Human Services, but I do want to acknowledge that this coalition is strong with our city firefighters, our city police officers, our county firefighters, and representatives from every hospital within Kern County. That covers a lot of geography. So Ridgecrest is there, and Delano is there as well. And we also acknowledge some of our other partners, Clinica Sierra Vista, First Five Kern, that continues to fund this unfunded program every year, and some of the individuals, including a safely surrender adoptive mom who has recently joined our Coalition efforts. So again, thank you for your time this evening. I'm glad there's a large audience. Please spread the word about safely surrender baby. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, the next presentation is of a plaque to Ashley Ferguson, marketing manager, Daryl's Mini Storage honoring the company's beautification efforts at 9801 White Lane.
Each year, the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee continues to bring recognition to positive beautification with businesses and private properties in our community. This is a very viable program for Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, and the volunteers that go out and search the community for visual properties that make a difference in our community and such that they forward then pictures of these various properties for me to be able to select the property. All of you are very familiar with the presence of Daryl's Mini Storage in Bakersfield with their many, very upstanding locations, with their many storage facilities. And tonight, I'm here to recognize Daryl's Mini Storage with this plaque that I will present to Ashley Ferguson, who is representing Daryl's Mini Storage.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey Hall and Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. It is a great honor to be recognized for this beautification award. We started Daryl's Mini Storage 53 years ago. We currently have 56 facilities located from the North Highlands to Bakersfield and San Luis. We have 16 operating facilities in Bakersfield and plan to build three more. Our first location in Bakersfield was built in 1980 on Mount Vernon Avenue, and our current operating facility opened in 2014 on Snow Road. We are breaking ground on a new facility located on Stockdale and Rinffow. Daryl's Mini Storage takes great pride in building clean and attractive storage facilities with visual and architectural appeal for the past 53 years and counting. Our stunning water features and beautifully landscaped grounds are truly a work of art. Photographers have used our fountains as gorgeous backdrops for weddings as well as other special occasions. Something no one is aware of is the history behind our water features. We use the water from our fountains to control the temperature of the compressor unit, which in turn cools our temperature-controlled units. Synthetic turf is currently being added to our facilities for water conservation. We would like to thank Mayor Hall for his continued support and for the support from Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. Thank you.
Mayor, the next presentation is of a proclamation to student leaders from the Jim Burke Education Foundation Dream Builders Organization, declaring February 17, 2016, Kind is the New Cool Day.
I have three students that have joined me this evening, Sean Hill, Andrew Elman, and Brock Simpson. And also in the audience today are Brittany Sinclair from Stockdale High School, Cameron Reeves from Bakersfield Christian, Libby Otter from Liberty High School, Madeline Cuney from Bakersfield High School, Nicolette Sanchez from East Bakersfield High School. You know, the Jim Burke Education Foundation Dream Builders has existed on our community for many, many years and made such a positive difference in the lives of these young people that are engaged in doing all the wonderful things that they do with their community service projects, and at the same time, offering community service to our Bakersfield community. This evening, I'm here to talk about and recognize Kind is the New Cool Day. And as you've heard me say many times, Bakersfield is a very kind community, and I appreciate the giving that we receive each day in this community. So I'd like to offer the following proclamation. The Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California has officially proclaimed February 17, 2016 as Kind is the New Cool Day in our city. In recognition of the eight local high school students who, as a part of the Jim Burke Education Foundation Dream Builders Organization, have created curriculum and videos focused on teaching and promoting kindness among elementary school students, and in recognition of Ronald Reagan Elementary School, the first school to present the program to students on February 17, 2016, and in recognition of the aspiration to expose all local elementary school students to this curriculum with the goal of fostering caring and kindness in our community, and it's signed Harvey L. Hall, Mayor, City of Bakersfield. And I present this to all three of you, and whichever one would like to make some comments, please step forward.
Thank you. We'd just like to say thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, for this proclamation. Basically, with our project, we just going to curriculum to all the students at Reagan Elementary, just to really teach a habit of kindness and instill a sense that kindness is really important, not just the math and the English that is usually taught, but really teaching kindness as a habit so that they could take it into their own lives and really create a better sense of kindness in our community for an even kinder and greater Bakersfield, in the next generation. So thank you again.
I'd like to acknowledge several of the political science classes that we have tonight, first from Cal State University Bakersfield and from Bakersfield College. For all of you students, thank you for taking the time to be here tonight to observe City Hall and the outstanding work that these council members do through their agendas with the City Council meeting. I always encourage the students to come back at any time, because there is plenty of opportunity for you to learn about city government. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mayor, item five is public statements.
At this time, we will receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, provide it to the city clerk, who will then provide the necessary your verbal statement, provide it to the city clerk, who will then provide the necessary copies to the city council. If you are here to speak on hearing items 10A and 10B, this is not the time for you to speak. Members of the audience are asked to avoid engaging in any behavior that disrupts the orderly conduct of our meeting. Please do not criticize or impugn the mayor, city council, or any member of the staff or the audience. The city council is very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the city council cannot take action on an item when it is not on the agenda. The city council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. I know that we have a lot of public speakers tonight, and I just want to remind everyone of the three-minute rule and 15 minutes per topic. And we have several topics that have been asked to be spoken for by members of the audience. I encourage you not to repeat the previous statements of other speakers, because I want to try to afford everyone the opportunity to speak. So we're going to have to have a give and take tonight on the number of public statements that we're going to honor. So I ask you to stay with my three-minute rule and the 15 minutes per topic. Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, we have 29 speakers this evening. The first is David Lyman regarding Bakersfield Museum Trail.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm David Lyman from Visit Bakersfield, and I'm so pleased to have our four museum partners joining me. Let me introduce you. From your left, Steve Sanders from Calm, the California Living Museum, Mark Engelheim from the Bakersfield Museum of Art, Roger Perez from the Kern County Museum, and Coral Hancherik from the Buena Vista Museum of Natural History and Science. Last summer, when I did my budget presentation, you may recall, I mentioned we were working on a joint promotion program for each of our local museums. Well, and that would be daylighted in the upcoming year. Well, tonight is the night, and we're pleased to unveil for you officially, the Bakersfield Museum Trail. The Bakersfield Museum Trail is a 15-mile driving tour that connects Bakersfield's four unique and family-friendly museums. I asked the clerk to give you a copy of our new brochure. You are among the first to get this brochure. It will be distributed starting tomorrow at 1,200 locations, that's 1,200 locations, in central and southern California, various hotels, amenities, attractions, California welcome centers that also will be available here locally at hotels and the museums and our office. You will see a detailed driving tour in the brochure, as well as special cost savings for those that want to go to our museums. Special thanks for this brochure go to the Kern County Tourism Promotion Grant Program. Our friends at the Kern County Board of Trade provided major funding for this. You know, the Bakersfield Museum Trail is an outstanding example of what happens when people work together. Rather than each museum working, competing with each other to get a bigger slice of the pie, they've been collaborating, working together to make the size of the pie larger. So I'm happy to recognize their outstanding efforts tonight, and we look forward to the Bakersfield Museum Trail being yet another example of why we say that in Bakersfield, there really is more to explore. So on behalf of our museum partners and Visit Bakersfield, we hope to see each of you soon out on the Bakersfield Museum Trail. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next public speaker, please.
Louis Medina regarding invitation to celebrate 2-1-1 Kern Day tomorrow, February 11th, with CAP-K.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Yes, good evening. My name is Louis Medina. I'm the Outreach and Advocacy Manager for Community Action Partnership of Kern. Greetings to all the city council and Mayor Hall. First of all, I just want to congratulate Mayor Hall on his new mural, which I spotted on Monday and had to stop and take a picture and post on Facebook right away because I was so struck by it. It's a very handsome mural, so congratulations on your 45th anniversary of Hall Ambulance as well. The reason I'm here is because tomorrow is February 11th, and February 11th is celebrated nationwide as 2-1-1 Day for communities such as ours that are fortunate enough to have a 2-1-1 information and referral service, which can link clients to all sorts of social services, and oftentimes even lifesaving services when 2-1-1 is used to provide evacuation information, for example, in case of a fire or flooding. So tomorrow, Community Action Partnership of Kern, which operates 2-1-1 Kern County, is having an open house and press conference at our 2-1-1 headquarters, which are right here downtown on the corner of 19th and V Streets, at 10:00 AM. And to celebrate, we are going to be demoing a new online database of services, which is the exact same database that the information and referral specialists use to link clients to services. We made it available, it's been available online to the general public because a lot of people are self-referring from their cellphones, from their iPads and computers, but we made it even more user-friendly. So we'll be demoing that for the community and also giving tours of our information and referral centers so they could see how the calls happen, how our info and referral specialists deal with the public. And we would like to invite you, your representatives, members of the media, and just the community at large, to come and join us and celebrate 2-1-1. Just to give you a little bit of history, the beginnings of 2-1-1 were very humble as what used to be called the Kern County Helpline way back in 1996. It was an 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday service, and on the first month of operation, it took 440 calls. Last year, the average monthly call volume at 2-1-1 was 4,800 calls. And this year's 2-1-1 Day is special because it is our 20th anniversary. So if you come tomorrow, please be sure that there will be 2-1-1 cupcakes for everyone all around. And we just really want to invite you all, if you happen to be downtown, I think several of you probably work downtown, please come to our 19th Street office on 19th and V Streets and come and see what 2-1-1 is all about. It really is a vital community service. Thank you very much.
Folks, the presentations have concluded. All applause is no longer indicated. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
We have three speakers regarding mobile food trucks. The first is Jerry Baranowski.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Just for to help you out, my name pronounced Baranowski. In 1985, I came to Bakersfield, and I, as I said, this is my second home, and that's the way I want to treat the Bakersfield. I also the business owner for 25 years since downtown, running Jerry's Pizza. Today, I would like to share with city council and Honorable Mayor the issue which recently arise among the truck, food truck owners and restaurant establishment. I'm in the support of to revise current ordinance, current city ordinance regarding mobile food trucks. There is dispute ongoing right now between mobile food business and permanent long-time restaurants that have fought to stay alive in down economy. Like many cities, Bakersfield is just the latest to experience the growing pains of businesses fighting for the same dollars, I would say, even pennies. Due to similar conflict, many cities revise already city ordinances, for instance, Los Angeles. I do believe that Portland closing down parking lot with food trucks. Questions? According to the current city ordinance, how many food trucks can park in the downtown area? How long can they stay? Who will be taking care of the trash from these businesses? Who will maintain these areas and keep them clean? Or if current ordinance has been enforced at all? Finally, if the food truck parks in this same spot for hours and hours every day and is still considered as a mobile food truck? For me, mobile has one meaning. It is moving from place to place in certain time. Social media has been ruddling with name-calling and accusation from certain business owners. Some of them, some of the individual are losing good manners even, calling the name and sending threats. This is not the way to solve a business issue. I have been, as I said, in business for over 25 years. We need to get together and find a way for everyone to be able to make a living without running each other down on the line. Nobody wins in those situations. I have personally nothing against the food trucks. As entrepreneur myself, I understand that everyone wants to find their place. Food trucks are very cool. Sometimes looks almost exotic. I like them. But can you imagine how downtown would look like with bumper-to-bumper food trucks? Picture a street with border-up shop windows and nothing to do but grab a chip meal and go somewhere else where there is something to do, maybe? How about the truck that sell cheap shoes in front of the shoe store, or maybe even lawyer in front of the courthouse? Because everything can be mobile recently, and so on, so on. When there will be no enough business, we need to know, mobiles food truck will leave the area and move to another. What about the restaurant owners? They need to stay or close down their shop. In Bakersfield, there is place for everybody, and I'm encouraging the owner of the trucks to get together with restaurant owners and discuss this issue. The good platform of that is Downtown Business Association, if we're talking about just the core area downtown, or basically ask city council for assistance. That's what I'm doing now. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Joe Simpson.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Hi, good evening. My name is Joseph Simpson. I'm the owner of California Hot Dog Company. I have been a mobile food business owner in this city for almost three years now. And just as my good friend Jerry Baranowski was just saying, as of late, we seem to have an issue. Sadly, what I've seen is a large number of illegal food operations taking place within this city, many of them operating without permits, without the necessary health codes being administered. The problem is, after 5:00 PM, everybody knows where these people are, what they're doing, and they also know there is no code enforcement going on after hours in this city. I don't believe that Bakersfield has a food truck issue. What we have by nature is reactionary nature in order to make a whole bunch of new city ordinances. Bakersfield has plenty of ordinances. What we need to do is enforce them and make sure that people are operating safely and legally. I believe there has to be a solution to this that doesn't include a bunch of new ordinances, and I also am with Jerry, that we need to get together in some type of forum for mobile food businesses and brick-and-mortar restaurants in order to find a solution. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Stephen Schreppfer.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Hall and council members. My name is Stephen Schreppfer, owner of Think Green Pettycabs downtown Bakersfield. Going on my second year of doing petty cab business here in town, I also run a food truck. I actually took the time, though, to go door-to-door and make sure all my neighbors were okay with the venture that I chose to set up at our location and operate. We're over by the hospital. We think that we're in a good location. We've got the hospital's blessing and the surrounding neighbors' blessings. We also would like to see some cooperation from brick-and-mortar businesses as well as food truck industries. We think that food trucks are good for the community, and at the same time, we don't want to lose, you know, the longtime food vendors or restaurants such as Jerry's Pizza and a lot of the other brick-and-mortar businesses downtown. Other than that, I'm just here to support food trucks and brick-and-mortar as well. We're about infill for downtown, generating tax dollars for the community to improve on the community. That's Think Green Pettycabs stand on this. Thank you.
Excuse me, which hospital do you operate closest to?
Mercy Downtown, the old Santa Fe Rail Credit Union, block from where NV Cafe used to be. They're no longer. So we're filling that void, and we're getting a lot of positive comments on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
The next speaker is Arlene Aninian regarding introduction of Bakersfield Bombers.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Hall and members of the city council. My name is Arlene Aninian. I'm here with my daughter Brittany Rivera. We come before your city council to introduce you to a brand-new sport in the city of Bakersfield, women's semi-professional tackle football. Our team is the Bakersfield Bombers. The Bombers is a full pad, full uniform, full tackle team, which Brittany and I are the proud owners of and which Brittany is a player for as well. The Bakersfield Bombers is a proud member of the Independent Women's Football League, which was founded in the year 2000. The IWFL is the longest-running international women's tackle football organization, which provides teams the opportunity to play at the top competitive tier of their sport while fostering an environment of goodwill and sportsmanship. The IWFL has taken the lead in the development of women's football for future generations, with over 1,600 women playing the sport in 35 teams across North America and Canada. Our team so far consists of 24 players and coaching staff of eight. Our season runs from April to June, and we will have four home games and four away games. The teams that we will be playing are from Sacramento, Carlsbad, Salt Lake City, Utah, and Phoenix, Arizona. We are happy to share with you that those teams, along with their families and fans, will be traveling and staying here in Bakersfield when they play the Bombers. Our home games will be played at Golden Valley High School, and each game is anticipated to have anywhere between 500 and 1,000 guests, we hope more, thus having quite an economic benefit to Bakersfield. We came up with the name Bombers because of the strong military presence we have in our family, from my grandfather to my father to myself and to my middle daughter Alexandria. Additionally, our head coach, personal trainer, and even our quarterback are military veterans as well. Because of this, military veterans will be free in each of our games. We are pretty sure that you have gone to other games in Bakersfield, such as the Condors, Bakersfield Jam, and Bakersfield Blaze. Brittany and I and our entire team cordially invite you, your family, and the rest of Bakersfield to join the Bakersfield Bombers at our home games of April 9th, April 16th, June 4th, and June 11th. We will have the color guard and the national anthem at 5:45, and each game begins at 6:00 PM. A copy of our schedule and information about our team and the IWFL has been provided to each of you. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Lauren Skidmore regarding High Speed Rail.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. My name is Lauren Skidmore with Kern Citizens for Sustainable Government, as well as Kern for HMF, a local coalition made up of business organizations, government entities, and local leaders who support locating the heavy maintenance facility here in Kern County. There are two sites, as you know, WASCO and Shafter. I just wanted to do a quick thank you to the city manager's office as well as Councilmember Parlier for their support in placing a resolution supporting the heavy maintenance facility and other like facilities associated with High Speed Rail in Kern County. I also wanted to thank Mayor Harvey Hall for his individual support on this issue and understanding the importance that this facility could become the seventh-largest employer in Kern County and provide 1,500 jobs that are not only important to our region but Bakersfield as well. If you have any questions or if any issues arise, I will be here in the audience when the resolution is read. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker. Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker. Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
I'd like to first of all say good evening to the mayor, the council, and the public. I'm here to do two, I'm here to make an announcement on two items, and I'm also here to support item number, I believe it's 811, that you're going to do the resolution that the last person spoke on about supporting the maintenance yard. The first thing I want to announce is that you have before you, we formed a new association. It's called the San Joaquin Valley High Speed Rail Association. When this group that was being formed, that supervisor, chairman of the board of supervisor was part of forming to support the maintenance yard, we were in Sacramento at the time forming this association and also speaking at the first meeting of the High Speed Rail Governing Board for the year. What this High Speed Rail Association is about, it's a forum, will host public forums, and will also be a local association to try to build support between this community and the High Speed Rail, the High Speed Rail Board, to support projects coming into the Central Valley. The High Speed Rail Station downtown, which is going on now, the maintenance yard, we're talking about how the High Speed Rail can also pay for some of the infrastructure that's going to be coming to the city of Bakersfield. And also be an advocacy group and an education group, so people can be informed on what the opportunities are for jobs and contracts and clear information. And then we will be a voice to take that back to Sacramento, to the board meetings, and also to the Business Advisory Council, so we can keep them filled in on what we're talking about locally. We're going to have our first forum, public forum, and I gave you a press release. I'm announcing it here today, and then we're going to start marketing it throughout the city. And we're going to have a forum on March 10th at the downtown Marriott Hotel from 12:00 noon to 1:30. Jeff Morales will be our keynote speaker. We're inviting the mayor of Fresno, our her-designee, the mayor of Palmdale, and LA Metro, also the city of Shafter, and also the city of Wasco, and we're also going to invite the city of Bakersfield. And we're going to have a roundtable to talk about the High Speed Rail potential for the maintenance facility here, the station, and other benefit of the High Speed Rails, and we can look at other cities, what they're doing, so we can look at lessons learned. Because I think the point is that the High Speed Rail has already left the station, and whether we like it or not, we need to get involved and make sure we're going to get those jobs, those contracts and benefit, and we want to get one shot at the opportunity. The last thing I say, and I see the time is going to be very short, is that we're doing a ninth annual public contracting expo, also on March 10th. And this is going to be a breakout session, a forum for luncheon, that's going to introduce the association. And then we're also going to do, and that's what you have in the handout, and we're also going to do a public forum on job opportunities for High Speed Rail and the utility industry. And it's going to be free to the public, that portion of it, so people can come in and find out and get the clear information, how do I get a job, and what do I need to get myself ready for this opportunity? So our people will be front and center when these jobs start breaking, because this thing's really going to break ground sometime this year, where there really, you're going to see a lot of activity in this valley. And if we're not ready for it, we're going to miss the boat. So I just wanted to welcome you guys, invite you, then I'm going to be talking to the city manager and staff and some other folks and some of you on the council about participating in this conference, also you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, and I hope you run for reelection. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, we have three speakers regarding dog vouchers.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Mr. Mayor, and honorable members of council. I am Liz Keough, and among other things, I am an animal control field services volunteer. I'm here to urge you to accept the recommendation of your budget and finance committee to allocate from the current year's reserve $20,000 for additional spay-neuter vouchers for doggies. As you know, the initial allocation ran out. It's because your citizens want to help handle the problem of overpopulation. They want to spay and neuter their animals, and I hope you will accept your committee's recommendation. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker. Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Susan Bennett. I am spay-neuter director for Kern Humane Society. I just wanted to comment, thank you very much to all of the members of the budget committee. I appreciated the way you spoke, the way you supported our program, and our intention of spaying and neutering over the next year. I urge you to vote to approve the item 8Z. And just a quick comment, during the last nine months, your voucher program has been working. Kern Humane Society has paid for 2,000-plus animals to be spayed and neutered. Half of those are dogs, and probably more than half of those were helped by your vouchers. That's a lot of puppies that don't end up in the dog pound. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker. Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, Stacy Ins. Basically, what Liz and Sue said. Just want to urge you to continue the spay-neuter vouchers for dogs. It's very important for people to be able to get the vouchers to help them get their dogs fixed at a low cost. Bakersfield continues to have a problem with overpopulation of dogs and puppies, and in order to make Bakersfield a better place to live, please, please, please allow this program to continue. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, we have 18 speakers regarding trap-neuter and release program for animals. The first is Neil Sinapa.
Let me, before the gentleman speaks, let me remind everyone what the clerk has just said. Fifteen speakers, 18 speakers for 15 minutes. So if I'm going to allow everybody to speak, people are going to have to come in quickly, make their statement, so that we can call the next person in line. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Thank you, Honorable Mr. Mayor. My name is Neil Sinapa. I am an advocate for local dog rescue, and I work in the, I volunteer in the local Kern County Animal Shelter. I'm here today to recommend that the city implement a TNR program similar to what the county has. The reason being is because half of the constituents in, basically, Bakersfield, what we know as Bakersfield, have the option of catching the cats in their, in their communities, taking them to the county shelter, getting the cat fixed, and re-releasing them. And the thing is that we don't have that option. As a city constituent, I don't have that option. And there has been so many times where I wish that that was the case. There are plenty of feral cats in my neighborhood. If we could just easily catch them and then get them to the shelter, get them fixed, get them sent out, I think it would be beneficial not only for the cats' well-being, and it would end a lot of the animal suffering, but it would also end the suffering of a lot of the ACO officers that have to go out and get these cats from the street, whether they be slightly injured, whether they be deceased. That's emotional trauma as well for a lot of the people that work for the city. So what I am asking you to do is please consider a TNR program. I know that keeping Bakersfield beautiful was, was, I mean, it's kind of a theme here for the city, and I think implementing a TNR program would not only keep us beautiful in vision, but it would keep us beautiful in mind, body, and spirit as well. So I really hope that you guys consider this.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker. Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Leapsite, and I'm here to address the trap-neuter release, and I'll keep my comments short. I have been trying to do it on my own. I'm a retired senior citizen living on fixed income, and it's, even with the vouchers, it's financially challenging for me. And I would really appreciate if the city could make free spay-neuter for trap-neuter-release cats an option for me to be able to do it. I've done, I've fixed seven cats so far and trapped four kittens that a friend of mine has made available for adoption after they calmed them down and got them used to human contact. So please help. There's also a couple of other people, I know they're on fixed income, and they also want a trap-neuter release. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Mayor, the following speaker is Erin Clerico.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Barbara Hayes. I am president of Kern Humane Society. I'm not a city resident, however, I deal on a daily basis trying to help a number of city residents spay and neuter the total amount of cats roaming in the Bakersfield area. If you've looked around, you know that there are stray cats on every, in every church, a facility, behind every school, in city parks, office buildings, shopping centers. The cat people, of which I am president, try to deal with as much as we can in helping people. We have many senior citizens. We have had successful programs through the Happy Cats, through the Kern County Animal Shelter, and we would really urge you to do such the same. Right now, the city of Bakersfield has an 84% kill rate, and we know that we can do better than this. Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Erin Clerico, followed by Peggy Soltis.
I'm going to pass. Thank you. If you want to pick it.
The next speaker is Courtney Clerico.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
My name is Courtney Clerico, and today I want to call your attention to an urgently-needed program in Bakersfield City, a trap-neuter and return program for community cats. As a lifelong resident of Bakersfield, I have seen community cat populations increase in my neighborhood, in my friends' neighborhoods, on my employer's property, and in public areas. As a dedicated cat people volunteer for over eight years, I have worked with hundreds of Bakersfield residents who are ready and willing to volunteer their own time in trapping, altering, and returning community cats, but cannot do so because they are unable to afford the cost of altering dozens of colony cats on their own. As a graduate student in the Master of Public Administration program at CSUB, I understand the importance of implementing effective, evidence-based government programs. In all of my research, trap-neuter and release programs yield success. It is no secret that Bakersfield has overutilized mass euthanasia as a short-term solution to the cat overpopulation problem for many, many years. Between October 2014 and September 2015 alone, the kill rate of cats in the city shelter was over 80%. If mass euthanasia were an effective means of decreasing community cat populations, then we would no longer have a problem in Bakersfield City. It is time to invest in a long-term, research-based humane solution that has saved taxpayer dollars, decreased euthanasia rates, and lowered cat populations across the country. It is time for a trap-neuter return program in Bakersfield City. Here are some statistics from just a few TNR programs in the U.S. The Feral Cat Coalition ran a two-year TNR program in San Diego that altered over 3,000 cats. The number of cats handled by the municipal shelter the following year dropped by 35%. The euthanasia rate of cats plunged by 40% and saved taxpayer dollars. Researchers in Orange County, Florida, found that a TNR program resulted in an 18% decrease in euthanasia rates and a 25% drop in public complaints of the, of community cats. Most notably, the shelter saved over $650,000. In North Carolina, a TNR program reduced the community cat population by 36% in just two years. Another study in Florida found that TNR reduced community cat populations by 26% in the first year alone. In 2007, San Jose had a kill rate of 70%, but by 2013, the shelter had altered over 8,000 cats and reduced its kill rate to just 15%. The shelter paid $50 for each spay and neuter, which was only a quarter of the cost for sheltering, caring for, and eventually killing a cat. I could go on and on about the success of TNR programs, but the evidence is clear. It's the best option for Bakersfield City. As a taxpayer, a lifelong Bakersfield resident, and most importantly, a passionate animal advocate, I urge you to send a TNR program to council committee for consideration and implementation costs. Thank you so much for your time.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Carol Lair.
I don't think I could possibly improve upon what Brittany just said.
The next speaker is Christina Serrano. Cheryl Barker, I'm sorry.
Again, I don't know that I can necessarily improve upon what she said. I have the same statistics with me now, so I pass.
Barbara Harden.
Good evening. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Hello, I am Barbara Harden. I am a lifelong animal lover, dogs, cats, everything. I have personally been instrumental in spaying and neutering over 100 cats from 2015 to 2016, not by myself, but with voucher programs and cat people and transport friends, but I've been instrumental in over 100 alone. I don't have a lot of money. I just have a little bit of time, but every cat that I see deserves a chance. I have gone behind supermarkets and trapped and sat in rain-soaked cars and feeding stray cats for hours and hours to try and get these guys and give them a chance. County has a great program that's starting. Everything's getting rolling. City has the opportunity to take that ball and just touchdown, because we have the separation now. It should be exciting for us, and we should be able to lower those numbers. The cats need it, we need it, and we want it. I personally would transport as many cats as you could give me for a TNR. I sign up now. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I have quite a few outside of my front yard, if you want to come and pick them up. They actually woke me up this morning fighting. This is, this is, this is a real issue and a serious issue, and I love the fact that so many of you have shown up this evening to express your concern and your interest in talking about this at the city. I think it's time we do do something about this. So, given that this has a lot to do with how we pay for it, I'd like to refer it to budget and finance, and I know a lot of you are passing, so I might save you the energy of coming and asking for it, but I'd like that council members, Parlier and Weir and I review this in the coming months to see how we might be able to make this work moving forward. So I, we'll refer that over and then obviously reach out to the city, or I'm sure, you know, check out the newspaper to find out when we're going to have that meeting so that you can be present for that as well. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Good evening, and I thank you very much for referring that. My name is Karen Eternow. I am the crazy cat lady, as I am known to my friends. Also, I am on the board of the Friends of the Kern County Animal Shelters Foundation and have been for many years. Personally done TNR myself and helped many people also to implement TNR. You have an opportunity this next week. The county has Nathan Winograd coming to speak, who is an ex- The county has Nathan Winograd coming to speak, who is an expert on basically the no-kill shelter. He's the founder of that, that principle, and has implemented it in many, many cities. If you could possibly find it, the time, and the effort to get together with him, I'm sure he could help you implement a plan, give you the statistics and the numbers and the amount of money you could save. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Shelley, Shelley Ash.
Thank you, all pass.
Marlene Ray.
Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, my name is Marlene Ray. I manage the gift shop and office for the cat people on 18th Street. And one of my responsibilities is to answer phone calls from the public requesting help with their cats and with problems with cats in their neighborhoods. And I can assure you that there's a great demand for help from city residents seeking help spaying and neutering free roaming cats. These people are concerned, they would like to do the humane thing and get these cats trapped, neutered, and returned to the neighborhood so we don't have any more problems with unwanted kittens. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, please call the next public speaker.
Lisa Daniel.
I agree with everything that's been said before. I'm here to support the TNR programs, all pass.
Mayor, the next speaker is Stacy, and I can't read your last name. I believe it might be Angerson, Auguston?
Auguston. All pass, but I am a favorite of the TNR program.
Kathleen Clerico.
Thank you, all pass.
Stacy Enns.
All pass, I agree with everything that's been said.
And the last speaker, Mayor, is Liz Keogh.
You forgot your vest.
Well, because the city doesn't have a TNR program, as a volunteer, I can't help with it. So I decided not to wear it. At our city clinics, once a month in the-
Liz Keogh, you must identify yourself, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor Hall. My name is Liz Keogh, K-E-O-G-H. I'm a volunteer for the Field Services Division of Bakersfield City Animal Control. At the clinics we have, in the park, and once a week at the shelter, we do see many people coming in with their cats to get them vaccinated. They are asking for vouchers to help with spaying them. You have responsible cat owners as well as dog owners, and to implement a TNR program is going to help the people who want to be responsible. So I urge you to refer it to budget and finance, as Councilman Rivera has suggested, and I thank you for your consideration of this issue.
I want to express my appreciation to all of you that yield your speaker opportunities this evening so that we could hear all of the necessary speakers. And the 15-minute period just expired, so those of you that gave up your time made it possible for me to get everybody in in 15 minutes. Madam Clerk, next public speaker.
Mayor, we have no further public statements.
Next item, please.
Under Workshops, Item A, Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee Update.
Mr. Fidler, please.
Honorable Mayor and council members, I'd like to introduce Ray Scott, past president for the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee, and Sal Moretti, Superintendent for Solid Waste Division. They will be providing the presentation tonight on the update for the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Hall, city council members, staff. You know, once again, it's just a privilege to be able to present to you about what your Keep Bakersfield Beautiful is doing. It's just been a privilege to be the outgoing chairman for 2015, and I'd just like to publicly thank God and thank you for what you enable us to do as Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. Here you see the committee members for this year, for 2016. And the great thing, it's not so much what I have to say, it's what other people have to say about Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. In 2009, in Long Beach, the first time I heard the mayor speak, he said, "We have the greatest group of volunteers that make up Keep Bakersfield Beautiful and make things happen." And that's what you see here. Plus, these are your pointees, so thank you. Great job in picking people who care about the city and make things happen. The mission of Keep Bakersfield Beautiful is to engage individuals to take greater responsibility for improving their, their community, our home. Thank you. Next. Here, you see the results of what Keep Bakersfield Beautiful has done. In seven year, in six years, seven national awards, not counting local, county, and state awards. Going from this year with Jennifer Pritchard receiving the Young Professional of the Year from Keep America Beautiful. Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, keep, and Bakersfield is the only city in the nation to have two Iron Eyes Cody Award winners, Mayor Hall and John Enriquez. We are one of 1,600 affiliates throughout the, throughout the country. And Keep Bakersfield Beautiful is one that is recognized as the top affiliate within the affiliation for Keep America Beautiful. We just came back from the national conference in Orlando, Florida, last week, where I get the privilege as a state leader for Keep California Beautiful and the affiliates here to represent Bakersfield, Kern County, on a state and a national level. And that's because of these people that are, that are on the board. It's because of the citizens of Bakersfield that enable Bakersfield to shine, where so many people look to us and say, "How can we be more like Bakersfield and Keep Bakersfield Beautiful?" The programs don't just stay here in Bakersfield. They go throughout the state. They're looked at on a national level as far as with the city Solid Waste Division going to Harvard. So the impact is on a national level, not just what we do here in Bakersfield. Next slide. Here is our, a list of our annual events. Keep Bakersfield Beautiful was one of the first national affiliates to take the Great American Cleanup and go year-round. This way, we afford companies throughout Bakersfield, individuals throughout Bakersfield, to clean up Bakersfield throughout the city instead of just what a lot of cities do is one month. No, this is year-round with, with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. John Price really summed this up. He said that everybody that is connected, partnered with Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, understand that Keep Bakersfield Beautiful has the citizens and the city at the heart of what they do to beautify our city, to go out and do programs, as in anti-graffiti, as in beautification, as in planting, all of the many things that we do through these seven, seven or eight events throughout the year. Then, of course, our biggest event, which is this year-round celebration that's coming up, April 23rd at Yocats Park, to where the mayor gets to do what he loves to do, recognize people's efforts. And that is one of the greatest things about Keep Bakersfield Beautiful and what we do is recognizing the efforts of everybody here in the city. The, really, when we're looking at this, I call it, or like to call it, Keep Bakersfield Beautiful has perfected the art of collaboration. As you see here at the bottom of the screen and this screen here, all of the entities that come together to make Keep, Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, all of the board members, all of the volunteers. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Sal Moretti, City of Bakersfield. And are you a Harvard graduate, we get?
Faculty.
Faculty.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Sal Moretti, Superintendent for the City of Bakersfield Solid Waste Division. I wanted to thank, first of all, I wanted to thank Ray for his leadership on the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee the last couple of years, and also his leadership for the Greater Bakersfield Green Expo. If you haven't been to the Great American Cleanup, it's a much bigger event now. Also want to thank Mayor Hall, who leads the Great American Cleanup and who's a leader for all things KBB. To update the council on KBB goals, it's important to note that relationships matter. Everything we do is a result of relationships. It's not just about getting volunteers, it's about getting a sense of commit, of community. Through KBB, we got the Caltrans, we got the BHC, the Bakersfield Homeless Center crews on the Caltrans freeways to pick up the litter. And those relationships, that spawned additional relationships with Kern Cog, with KGET, with the Sheriff's Office, and those got us additional funding and a lot of media exposure. And that helped us to develop a sponsorship program for the West Side Parkway, which is not yet a Caltrans freeway, and which we need to find the funds for to go ahead and get the litter picked up. We have a lot of sponsors. It's amazing how much the private sector has stepped up to be a part of this program. What we found is that the private sector really appreciates a charity where they get to help people work a hand up, not a hand out. And we're experiencing that. We've gotten over $175,000 so far from sponsors since the program started, saving the city money. These relationships continue to create new ones. Just a few weeks ago, Caltrans, the domain office of Caltrans came down to Bakersfield to talk about a veterans initiative where they want to go ahead and, and basically copy our BHC program using veterans, and they've got funding for this, which is very important. Now, this is going to work, they wanted to start in Kern County, in Bakersfield, because they knew we had the relationships in place already, where it would be a lot easier to set this thing up without having to develop the relationships. And it's going to be really something you can see with your own eyes. Right now, when you drive down the freeway, you can see where the city limits end by the litter that's on the freeway. The county hasn't got the system in place yet, and this would help them with the funding to clean the freeways, the Caltrans freeways beyond the city limits. Again, more relationships are spawned. Just before the end of last year, Holly Lazarini called us up and said she wants to participate in this program and the Lazarini Foundation, they're the advanced beverage people, and they said they want to participate in this program, they wanted to figure out a way to make a donation, and could we help them? And of course, we were able to help them with that, and I'm not, I don't think anybody's here from the Lazarini Foundation, but I wanted to thank them for their $20,000 donation. And Holly in particular, she's an avid bike trail and hiker along the river, and so she asked that we would focus on setting up the crews to go out there and, and help water department or recs clean up along the bike trail, and especially along the riverbank where a lot of homeless encampments, they pick up and go, the homeless, but they don't pick up their trash when they leave, and so it leaves quite a mess. So we were glad to have her support, and we've already got crews going out there to clean up along the riverbank, starting at Allen, we're going to work our way across. We're not going to be moving people out of their camps, that's not part of the purview of this, but we are going to be out there picking up the litter. I'm sure some of you will appreciate that who are out there a lot. So I don't want to get ahead of the Downtown Business Association, so I'm not going to speak much about what they're poised to announce in the very near future, but I do want to make this comment to those of you who have been particularly concerned about the trash downtown and the alleys and the dumpsters and the enclosures. What the Downtown Business Association is getting ready to announce is going to help us with that, and my goal to you, I'm not going to make it a promise, but kind of, is to make those dumpsters and enclosures a thing of pride and beauty. So, so, seriously though, putting this in monetary terms, these relationships are close to a million dollars annually. We learned from Allen a long time ago, Solid Waste did, that we can do anything we want as long as it doesn't cost any money. And so a few years ago, we got you curbside recycling for free, and now we're trying to work these relationships so that we can get services improved without adding to our, to our already strained budgets. At the retreat this past January, KBB Committee, along with several of us and some of you were there, got a chance to talk about our goals for 2016, and we just had a chance to go through all the things that were important to us this past, this next year. How can we work together to accomplish more without adding strain to these strained budgets? That's been our guiding philosophy. All of our goals add to improve our, the city and its partners, using the power of the volunteer, the community, and our cooperative energy. Within these goals, you don't see any funding requests. KBB and our volunteers and our coordinator have worked very, very hard to find the sponsors and the grants to fund all of the initiatives that they come up with. It's been our way through all the years. When we started the BHC program, I don't need to go into that, you guys know all about that program, but KBB was the driving force for this program. It doesn't take, I need to remind, I don't think I need to remind you that Mayor Hall and John Enriquez were sat on that Caltrans ad hoc committee with KBB for years, trying to get Caltrans to move on this, and it was their leadership that made this happen. Since then, we've carved out an after-school program where we reach over 1,000 BCSD students per year and give them the message of recycling and litter. Special thanks to Sophia Felix and Jessica, our KBB coordinator, who make this program work. And thanks to all of you who've had a chance to participate in this. I know that Councilmember Rivera, check your calendar, you're scheduled for tomorrow at Emerson School, and Mayor Hall, I know you're scheduled for later on this month to go out and participate. We worked with the neighborhoods to build community gardens using grant funds and the hard work of the community. These gardens, which had been hotspots for illegal dumping, have become community centers. A couple of months ago, Councilmember Parlier and myself joined the Greenfield Walking Group to install a very attractive patio using stones and recycled glass, again, at no cost to the city. We continue to work closely with the mayor to recognize our community partners. I want to thank the mayor again. No organization could have a better cheerleader or spokesperson for all the programs that we do, and can't, can't say thank you enough for that. We leveraged our available trucks without using overtime to work with every community group, every church group, every council member to clean Bakersfield. If you, if a group can provide the volunteers, we've wanted to make sure we provided the equipment that that group needed to clean up whatever neighborhood they were coming from. I see Andre Gonzalez is here from Children First. This Saturday, we'll be doing a cleanup in East Bakersfield. Again, he leads and we just support. Some might have asked why, why I wanted to do this presentation. I'm not a member of the KBB board, but I really wanted to share the value of KBB to the city. Historically, as all trash outfits are prone to do, we focused on the trash inside of the can. 15 years ago, during another tough budget season, Wreckin Parks had to get rid of Keep Bakersfield Beautiful, and we jumped at the chance to take it over in our area as an enterprise fund, and we did. It's allowed us to shift our focus from the trash in the can to all the trash, the litter and the illegal dumping, and it's made us a better solid waste division as a result. By partnering with KBB and the great spirit of the volunteers, this new approach has allowed us to enter every neighborhood, to reach all of our customers, and on a much more positive and personal basis. It's because of KBB that I think that our, our relationship with the unit, community has become second to none. Any questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Under Consent Calendar Items 8A through 8AC for approval, a staff memorandum was received regarding Item 8T, correcting the last paragraph of the administrative report to state Item 2 appropriates $141,216 of utility surcharge fund balance to fund the change orders.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Does any council member wish to recuse themselves because of a conflict? Mr. Maxwell.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, Terry Maxwell, will be abstaining from the Item 8AB for a conflict. It is a source of income.
Thank you, Terry. Does any council member wish to remove an item for separate consideration? Mr. Parlier? Thank you. Mr. Rivera, did you have anything?
Yes. Item 8AB, please. Thank you.
If I heard that correctly, then I will make a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items 8A through 8AC Charlie, with the exception of Item 8H, 8N as in Norbert, and 8AB as in Boy.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Councilmember Parlier on item 8 is in Henry, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we all have strong opinions when it comes to high-speed rail. You know, the cost of it, is it ever going to be completed? But I think this item transcends that. What we're talking about, if and when the high-speed rail comes, there's going to be a heavy maintenance facility. And with that facility is going to come potentially thousands of jobs. And if high-speed rail ever comes to this community, I think we should be in a position, especially with the downturn in oil, that we try and attract whatever jobs we can get to Bakersfield or the surrounding community. So I am in full support of this resolution, supporting a heavy maintenance facility, again, not high-speed rail, but in support of the heavy maintenance facility, and Kern for HMF, which stands again for Heavy Maintenance Facility. Thank you.
Councilmember Parlier, would you like to make a motion for approval on item 8H is in Henry, please?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to move item 8H, staff's recommendation.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Councilmember Parlier on item 8 is in Nora, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give a big thank you to Public Works on this item. This is regarding an auto mall item. It was between Infinity and Nissan, they had some fiber optic connecting between, basically the same business. The problem was gasoline alley and all the surrounding streets were just paved, and they were going to have to trench stuff. And Nick, you and your staff came up with fantastic ideas to, you know, circumvent having to tear streets up and do, you know, major construction again in an area that was just fixed. And I just want to thank you and your team for the hard work, diligence. I noticed we went back and forth with those folks who were at the auto mall several times, but you came up with great solutions, and again, thank you.
Councilmember Parlier, would you like to offer a motion of approval on item 8? In is in Nora, please.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move staff recommendation. Thank you.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Councilmember Rivera on item 8, A is in Alfred, B is in Boyd, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just trying to help out staff here. I read the admin report, and I noticed that staff recommends city council determination on that particular item, and I noticed it was on consent, so I didn't want to have it approved through consent and then not give you some clarification. I'll move that the review of mobile food vendor practices and rules be referred to Legend Lit Committee for further review. Does the city attorney have something to add?
Mayor, Councilman Rivera, I was unaware that Councilmember Maxwell was going to recuse himself from this item due to a source of income, and as he is the chair of Legend Lit, I'm wondering out loud if it wouldn't be better to send it to a different committee. Could you just give me maybe 30 seconds so that I could confer with the city manager, please?
Sure, absolutely.
Mayor, Councilman Rivera, the city manager and I agree that with your indulgence, it should be a motion to go to Budget and Finance in light of Councilman Rivera's, excuse me, in light of Councilman Maxwell's recusal.
Okay, well, that's the committee I chair, and I wasn't necessarily trying to do that, but if that's where you feel it should go, then I would be happy to review that with my colleagues. So I will make a motion to refer it to Budget and Finance. Thank you.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, with Councilmember Maxwell abstaining.
Councilmember Smith, do you have a comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, my comment was the discussion that happened after I pushed the button, so I'm fine. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Hearings, Mayor, item 10.
Before I open the public hearings, I wish to state the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It is 15 minutes for all speakers, therefore it is important that you identify yourself and make your statement quickly so that others may speak. We will hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation first, then we will hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there is testimony on both sides, there will be a five-minute rebuttal period for each side. You'll notice a clock on the wall behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself, and at 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up, and to quickly end your statement. You may pose questions during your statement, but they will not be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, provide it to the city clerk, who will then provide the necessary copies to the city council. Again, please be courteous in the use of speaking unless there is an approval by the majority of the city councilor, as a strict 15 minutes time limit for all those in favor or in opposition to staff's recommendation. So please be precise and do not repeat the remarks of previous speakers. Madam Clerk, please read the first public hearing item.
Item 10A, public hearing to consider amendment number six to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Fiscal Year 2014-15 Action Plan.
Mr. McIsaac, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. This is a amendment to our current year 2014 action plan for the use of our HUD entitlement grant funds. There are two basic items that are being proposed in this current amendment. One is a reallocation, or an allocation of an additional $250,000 in home funds to our ongoing down payment assistance program. That's a program that we periodically need to replenish with funds as is needed. The second one is a request from the Alliance Against Family Violence and Sexual Assault, a nonprofit organization in Bakersfield. They are currently experiencing a decrease in their funding sources, so they have requested from the city an infusion of $50,000 for this year. They will be asking similarly for that in the coming year, and have also asked for a similar allocation or contribution from the county of Kern, which I understand to believe that they are inclined to grant them that assistance also. So those are the two things that are proposed in this current amendment. Happy to answer any questions.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item and ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation. Persons wishing to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation. Seeing none, I will ask if there are persons present who wish to speak in support of the staff recommendation. Persons present who wish to speak in support of the staff recommendation. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on this item, return to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. Motion to approve the amendment number six to the HUD Financial Year 2014-15 Action Plan.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B is a public hearing to consider zone change number 15-0251. Appealed also, McIntosh and Associates, representing Frank and Donna Delfino, the property owner, has applied for a zone change on 4.2 acres located at the northwest corner of Castro Lane and Kingsley Lane.
Mr. McIsaac, please.
Again, thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I believe we have a PowerPoint. Is it on here, Roberta? Can you, okay, that's the right one. Thank you. This item is, it's regarding a 4.2 acre piece of property. It's a little bit north of Ming Avenue in the Valley Plaza Mall, and a little bit east of Wybelle and Highway 99. On this aerial view, the site itself is here outlined in yellow. Want to make mention a little bit towards the end here of Kingsley Lane. This is Castro Lane. It's a short cul-de-sac street with about seven homes on it that are asking for something, a special consideration as we move forward with this. Just a little bit of history, this appeared before the Planning Commission back in last December, and at that time, they were requesting actually a zone change to R2 and a general amendment to low, medium-density residential for the purposes of accommodating approximately 42 multifamily units. The Planning Commission recommended denial of that proposal. It was subsequently appealed by the applicant. After it was appealed, it was proposed potentially as a sort of compromise that would be more in keeping with the desires of the neighborhood residents to, instead of R2, to propose a zone change to the R1 4.5 zone, which is a single-family residential zone that would allow lots as small as 4,500 square feet. At the year last meeting on January 20th, it was continued to this meeting to consider that. And going here, this is a layout of how those R1 4.5 lots might actually be facilitated in this, that was prepared by the applicant, it would accommodate 24 lots. And on February 1st, a informal community meeting was held with a number of the residents in the area. Councilmember Parlier, whose ward this would be in if annexed, attended that meeting. I believe everyone of the residents there was supportive of the R1 4.5, the single-family small lot zoning over the originally proposed R2 zoning. As you can see in this diagram here, though, there were three lots right here that were proposed that would be fronting on Kingsley Lane. Several of the homeowners on Kingsley Lane had some concerns about those lots as it may increase traffic and affect their privacy, and asked if perhaps those lots could be kind of just turned on a 90-degree angle so that they oriented towards Castro. Probably would lose one lot in the process. The applicant or his representative was supportive of that. Staff has looked at that and believes it is a viable option. However, that would be a function of when this property would be proposed for a tentative track map at some time in the future, and is not something we believe would be appropriate to condition this particular zone change on. So we feel with that, that overall, the proposal now is more acceptable to the community in the area, and staff is recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item and ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation. Persons wishing to speak in opposition to the staff recommendation. Seeing none, I will now ask if there are persons present who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Persons wishing to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. Good evening, please identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Roger McIntosh, and with McIntosh and Associates, I'm representing Frank and Donna Delfino in this application. As Mr. McIsaac mentioned, we did have a meeting with the neighbors, we discussed their concerns. We feel this is a good compromise. I want to thank Councilmember Parlier and his wife for showing up for the meeting. We had good discussion. While we cannot guarantee that lots will not front on Kingsley, I would encourage the neighbors that the process is that when a subdivision comes in, may not be by me, may not be by Mr. and Mrs. Delfino, but when that happens, attend the Planning Commission hearing and voice your concerns at that point, and obviously, it's appealable to the council. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions, but we are in favor of staff recommendation. Thank you.
Are there any additional persons present who wish to speak in favor of the staff recommendation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this item and return to council for comment and action. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to thank the neighbors, the residences of this community, staff, Mr. McIntosh, my wife for attending the meeting. I think everybody worked together, came to a compromise on this in the future, but really what we're talking about right now is a zone change to a single-family homes 4.5. And the multifamily homes are no longer on the table, so with that, I move staff recommendation. And thank you again.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the hard work Councilmember Parlier did on this, and I think it's a great compromise. I just had one question. The study map showed 24 lots, is that the maximum that the zoning will allow?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Smith, that is the likely maximum yield. It is kind of an oddly configured piece of property, so given, you know, streets and lot designs, I think 30 is the hypothetical maximum, but it's probably 23, 24 for practical purposes.
Okay, thank you.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Under reports, item 11A, Budget and Finance Committee Majority and Minority Reports, Regarding Proposed Changes to the Local Vendor Preference Policy.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask my colleagues to indulge me. I've got some outstanding questions and other things, so I'd like to actually pull this item and continue it until a later date, and I'll work with staff on re-agendizing it at a later time.
You have a motion for continuance on this item? Please cast your votes.
The motion is unanimously approved.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I could get my clicker to work earlier, and I missed out on an opportunity to thank staff on item 10A, specifically 10A 2 and 3. You guys moved very, very quickly on that request, and wanted to thank Mr. Tandy and staff for getting that processed and, you know, coming to the rescue of the Alliance. They do great work, and I think, you know, we'd be remiss if we weren't in a position to answer the call to help them. So, thank you all for making that happen. It is definitely a worthwhile venture. Have a good night.
Councilmember Maxwell.
Thank you, Mayor Hall. I had several items here. I just want to ask the city attorney for the RDER for 24th Street. When is the closing for comments?
Mayor, Councilmember Maxwell, I am informed that the last date for comments is February 25th.
Okay. One question I did have. During the evaluation of the draft, as well as the final EIR, as it came in front of the city council, many of the questions that could have been raised couldn't be raised at that time. Is there any problem with anybody on the dais actually submitting questions that they'd like to see answered?
Mayor, Councilmember Maxwell, no. In fact, that would be encouraged, that if anyone from the council has comments, I would encourage you to put those in writing and get those in as soon as possible.
Thank you. We also had a, I did a referral for a possibility of hiring a private security company to start going through the 24th Street, as well as the Centennial Corridor area, and we got a response for that referral from the city manager's office. And I guess maybe I reflect back on... And I guess maybe, I reflect back on the young lady who is here, and the house next to her has been broken into three times. One of those times, I actually, she called me after she called the police. I got there, and fortunately, the police did show up at some point. And once they got there, they acted very professionally and did a really good job. But as people in these neighborhoods have had to call the police, and it becomes a question of response and priority, I still insist that there's got to be a way that maybe we can help these people out. So I'd like to refer that matter now to safe neighborhoods to see if maybe they can work something out to make these neighborhoods feel a little bit more safe due to the fact that, you know, they didn't ask for these projects and for those homes to be bought and for the crime to go up and all the transients breaking into these. So I'd like to make that referral. I'd also like to point out that there have been several break-ins in the Westchester area, and these are occurring at all times of the day. One occurred, I believe, yesterday during the day, the woman was home. Two people broke into her house, and it has the neighborhood up in arms, which I don't blame them one bit. Primarily, the south side of Westchester has a very, very good and very comprehensive email list. And I know that Mr. Richard Bean from the Bakersfield Californian kind of heads that up and does a great job with it. So he and I have talked, and on Monday night at 6:00, this Monday night, the 15th, at 6:00 at the Park at the Mark, we are inviting all people from the Westchester area. That includes both the north and the south. We will have police there to listen, and we'd like to think that at the end of that meeting, that everybody comes together and we develop a great plan for how we are going to combat what's going on in our neighborhood. We want to take our neighborhood back. I'd like to read something that was in one of our items tonight. While the water slide structure remains in operational condition, this was 88I where we're going to replace the water slide at Mertry. And it says, while the water slide structure remains in operational condition, as evaluated by staff and the state, it is recommended the action to be taken now to address these items. Moving forward with the project in the near term, we'll avoid any potential operational disruption during the summer season. After significant evaluation by staff, it was determined it was more cost-effective and beneficial to the city to replace the existing water slide structure and platform than undertaking interim repairs. The reason I read that is because I think that's the attitude that we probably should be taking with the condition of our roads. And I, on February 3rd of 2015, requested that we hire somebody to give us, as a consultant, a determination of what kind of condition our city streets are in. Now, that's been one year ago that I made that request. I'm wondering from the Public Works Director, are we any further or any closer to getting that report back?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Maxwell, yes, we are on the final stages of the report. They've gone out and evaluated. Majority of the streets, they are in the process of documenting their findings.
Okay. And I also had requested that maybe internally, we could take a look at the alleys. I was down the alley between Chester and I Street, between 24th and 23rd, and it looks more like a dirt road than it does anything else. So hopefully, you're working on that also. But I'd just like to have us all keep in mind, I don't know if you've ever been a member of a homeowners association, but, you know, they have to have certain funds that they hold in reserve for repairs. And I think that once we get this information back, it will be important for us to put a game plan together as to how we're going to start maintaining our roads in the kind of conditions that everybody would like to see them in. So I look forward to that report. Thank you.
Councilmember Parlier?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we all know the good works that Bark does for disabled members of our community with their various vocational programs. And recently, they have taken massive budget cuts within this area. There's a bill that has been authored by Assemblymember Grove, AB 1565, which could help with future funding for Bark and Bark programs. This has also been co-authored or endorsed by Assemblymember Salas and a whole list of other, both Republican and Democrats, in a full bipartisan support. So I'd like to have staff come back with a resolution in support of AB 1565 at the next council member, at the next council meeting, please. And lastly, I had something on my radar regarding some work that needed to be done at the southeast corner of Ming and South 8 regarding some trash and a tree that needed to be trimmed and stuff, and Wrexham Park must be psychic because yesterday about 9:30 in the morning, a crew was out there proactively taking care of that, and I just want to thank you for your efforts. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor Hall. This afternoon, at 2:00, I think most of us were able to attend the anniversary of the announcement, take a look at the mural for a hall ambulance. And I just wanted to say that, you know, Harvey, you're just too humble to say anything about it yourself, but I will, that the murals are really neat, okay? So the people, if you're going by there, take a look, okay? That's pretty cool. But more than that, that we have a company that's been devoted to Bakersfield, to Kern County, for 45 years. The leadership's been impeccable, and it shows with the equipment, with the leadership, and with the staff. So I just wanted to say congratulations, Harvey. Well done.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. The first thing is, I became a grandpa this last Sunday, so I'm very excited about that. And the miracle of life continues, and that's why we do what we do for our children and grandchildren. The second thing is, the city owns a piece of property at the corner of P/ Q and California Avenue, and it's about five and a half acres. The city has had a vision for quite some time for that to be part of the entertainment complex, which includes the Mertry Swim Center, the I Center, and also the Maya Cinema. I have been approached by a developer who is looking to put a office complex there, and that's a great opportunity also to have an office complex downtown Bakersfield. But I'd like to refer that to the Planning Development Committee and make sure that staff gives us all the options possible and that we do best for the future of our children and grandchildren for that property. Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was one of the ones that attended your mural unveiling today, and it's a masterpiece, certainly a masterpiece. But also, just hearing the history of your company, I enjoyed very much. You did a beautiful job with the presentation, but just knowing what your company has meant to our individuals and to our city, not just providing ambulance service, but just cutting-edge, just your staff and, you know, the awards that have been won, it's really a great story. And we are the beneficiaries. We are very fortunate to have the benefits that you have provided. Okay. Let's see, several things here. You know, we are working so hard to keep our city as litter-free as possible, and I love the way we have worked together to bring in the different groups that are, it's been a mutual benefit. But, you know, one thing we discussed a number of years ago, and I think we need to revisit it, putting the trash recept, containers by our get bus stops. That's something that not all of them do, and I can't remember how exactly why, how we did not come up with a solution for that when, you know, some time ago when it was worked on. Because when people, you can't get on, I don't know if you can get on the bus. I don't think you can with food or beverage. But certainly, when people are sitting, they're through with what they're eating or drinking, they leave their trash. And then, of course, it's more complicated than just having the trash container there, who's going to pick it up, and service, and all of that. But that would, of course, that would be a big help where our trash is concerned. So if we could revisit that, that would be, that would be great. And also, I would like to publicly give an update on the progress of In God We Trust America. We are the founding city. Back in 2002, our council voted yes to display our national motto. And of course, In God We Trust America, we encourage elected officials to vote yes, to legally display In God We Trust in their chambers. And we have just passed our 600, 600 across the country, and 125 cities and counties here in California, which I love talking to elected officials in other parts of the country, and they say, in California, 125. And yes, that, that, not, well, just last week, we had one more. So it's a total of 100, 605 now. So it's been very exciting, very rewarding to work on, and, you know, it's wonderful how elected officials are responding to this effort. Certainly, when they find out that it's completely legal, have been no legal issues, not even one. So anyway, I'm proud of the, our council and, you know, so I wanted to just report the progress. Thank you, Mayor. One more thing, very quickly. Mayor, I want to thank you for all of the people that you give presentations to. I enjoy them, and I think our council does, and there's nothing nicer than appreciating the good things going on by good people that are doing the good things. So I think it's one of the highlights of our meeting, and you're very generous about being willing to recognize different groups, a different individual. So thank you for doing that.
Councilmember Maxwell?
Thank you, Mayor Hall. I'd like to refer back to what Councilmember Smith was talking about on the property that sits on California and P. I have, that is in my ward. I've been intimately involved in this. I think this is a time-sensitive matter. I'd like to ask the city attorney, I would, I do not want this to go to planning. I think this is a, this is an issue that the city council should see, and if Councilmember Smith is against it at that time, he can go ahead and vote against it. Do we need, do I need to make a motion that that go ahead and not go to that committee? And as soon as possible, it come here.
Mayor, Councilmember Maxwell, historically, what we do in these situations is that once the referral has been made, unless there's an objection by a council member, the referral is made. You, it sounds like, object to it being sent to Planning and Development. We can certainly have a motion to that effect, but the city manager has indicated to me that I don't think that he has any objection to the matter coming to the full council. The first meeting in March?
City Attorney, I don't know whether they can vote on this tonight since it wasn't agendized. So my suggestion was actually that if it's A or B, that A or B appear on their agenda next meeting.
Which would be my recommendation, that we put it back on the agenda for March 2nd for a vote.
Okay. So on March 2nd, there'll be two things we'll be voting on. One is to put it on to, or to put it on to the Planning Committee, and the other one will be to just go ahead and approve the...
There will only be, right now, my understanding is there will only be one action item, and that is council consideration for which committee it should go to.
Or whether it should go to a committee?
Or whether it should go to a committee. Either way, I mean...
If by the next meeting, we have some agreement with the people who are interested in that, can that come to the, can that be agendized also?
I'm not aware of the situation, so I'm going to defer that to the city manager. I don't know where they are in that process.
Councilmember Maxwell, I don't know either. It's in progress. There have been three exchanges of documents. I expect that there'll be a fourth, at least a fourth.
But my question is, if we have got some sort of agreement with these people, can that be agendized into the next meeting?
The letter of intent places a date of coming to agreement by February 18th, and if it is, agreement is reached by that date, then the LOI says it would go on the council agenda.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Weir?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share that I had the honor and the privilege, along with Councilmember Smith, last Friday, to attend the mayor's proclamation given to the Guild House for its 50th anniversary of serving this community. And the very next night, we, I had the opportunity to attend their celebration combined with the Guild House and the Child Guidance Center. The Child Guidance Center is celebrating their 70th anniversary, Guild House their 50th anniversary, and the Guild House is also celebrating a pretty remarkable achievement of donating $2 million of volunteer-raised money to the Child Guidance Center. So it's quite a benefit to our community, and it was really a nice event to attend. In my understanding, there's been about 60,000 people go through the Child Guidance Clinic. It's really a really good service to this community. So if you are a patron of the Guild House, keep coming. If you aren't a patron, if you've not tried it, stop by. It's a really nice atmosphere. It's a lot of good food, and you, the proceeds of your meal will go towards a good cause. And whether you've been there before or you're a first-timer, when you're there, be sure and thank the volunteers, because they're doing a remarkable job. And that's it. Good night.
I have a number of items that I would like to talk about here. Councilmember Smith, I know you're very proud of your new grandbaby girl. What is her name?
Annabelle Rose Bitton, B-I-T-T-O-N.
Annabelle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hanson and Councilmember Sullivan, for the recognition of my company's 45th anniversary today and the subsequent unveiling of my mural. I was very honored to have Councilmember Smith, Parlier, Hanson, Sullivan, Weir, Maxwell, along with City Manager Tandy and City Attorney Gennaro, the Fire Chief's chief staff, Doug Greener, Tyler Hartley, and Ross Kelly, and Trevor Martinezon, present for my ceremonies today. 45 years is a long time, and 45 years that I've enjoyed having the opportunity to do business in the city of Bakersfield. And with the 10 years that I served my apprenticeship for before I started the ambulance company, that puts me 55 years in the ambulance business in Bakersfield, and it's been a very, very positive experience for me. And thank everyone for the continued support and the recognition this evening. I want to make a comment based on Councilmember Sullivan's support of my presentations. Four months ago or so, all of my presentations were limited to two presentations a meeting. And yes, there are many occasions where two doesn't get it done. And yes, there are many occasions where two doesn't get it done. One of the joys that I have as being mayor is offering these public recognitions for businesses, individuals, families, people that make up the positiveness of our Bakersfield community. And so it got to a point where I was having to turn people away, and I don't like doing that. And I had the discussion with the city manager, and he gave me approval to do whatever I think is best to give the recognitions that I wish to do. And so when we have the three recognitions like we did tonight, that's because the city manager gave me the approval to add to my two recognitions that I had been required to meet for many years here. And that's what the mayor's job is all about. The mayor's job is all about giving public recognition. I have to say that in my tenure as being mayor, I've now written 10,000 letters of recognition and acknowledgement to people in this community for doing the good work that they do, and I'm very proud of that record. And I will continue to do that as long as I'm mayor, but public recognitions are so important. And when I became mayor, one of the first things I did is set up a red carpet in the council chambers, because I want people to feel honored when they come and get their recognition from me. Everybody knows what a red carpet stands for. That's why it's a special presentation for me each time that I make the presentations on the red carpet. I want to say that next Tuesday afternoon will be the date that I've chosen to announce my intentions for the next election. But I first want to say how grateful I am for each of the council members offering their support toward my decision, whatever that may be. I always have enjoyed the relationships that I've had with all of the many council members that I've served with during the last 15 years. And for me to receive the endorsement of the sitting council members means a lot to me, and I appreciate everyone for that. But next Tuesday afternoon at 2:00 in the mayor's office, I will announce my decision in regards to the 2016 mayor's election. If there's no further comments, we stand adjourned.